There are other districts that have negotiated and not really looked at it in the detail, I think that you looked at it, who have done, you know, said, well, we're only going to, you know, pay 90% or something like that. I mean, I think the other districts are kind of having much less success than this.
Yeah, I would say there are definitely some districts out there, Jess, that are paying 80, 90, that decided to pay 80 or 90%, and didn't really go through the whole process of breaking down what the labor cost is, what the fuel cost is, and having those conversations. And quite frankly, forcing the bus company to do that for us. I mean, we said, we need to have that data in order to make these decisions. So they provided all that for us. And, you know, Michael worked closely with them to get all that done. So it was excellent.
Much appreciated, Michael. That's a big.
Lovely. Um, alrighty, the revised 2020-2021.
So you guys need to approve that amendment?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. So, do we have an amendment to, uh, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to accept the amendment as written to the fiscal year 20, um, bus contract to Connolly. Do I need to put other language in there? Is that being?
Um, do we have a second?
A second.
A seconded by Tim Knight. Okay, and we'll take a roll call vote. Jess Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
And Anna May O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Now the 2020-2021 calendar.
Thank you, Anna May. So we received notification a couple of weeks ago from the commissioner that September 14th was going to be a state holiday because that's the new marathon date, and it was going to be a one-year state holiday. So in order to make sure that we are in compliance with that, I asked that you look at our revised calendar that was in your materials and invoke the approved, vote to approve the new calendar, which includes September 14th as a day off for students.
Can I vote to approve and express how frustrated I am by the idea that we need to take our kids, if they are indeed even in school, out of school one more day, and that that wasn't a local decision as opposed to a state decision? I just feel like I need to register that because this is irresponsible and working off of old data about how schooling and what we were so worried about losing. It seems to me that Patriots Day and the marathon is always a big deal, but it is not. It just strikes me as short-sighted. So I'll be the guy who says that.
Yeah, so it's just a one-year. So it's one, I understand the frustration. What it does educationally for us and instructionally for us is it makes three long weekends in the month of September.
Right.
So that, you know, that truncates the instructional days we have in September a lot. So just.
truncates that, and it's, you know, a bunch of kids who are trying to get back into a schedule, if we're lucky enough to be on a schedule at that point.
Correct.
And, you know, kind of makes things harder on kindergarteners. It makes things harder all over the place. But I understand that there are unintended consequences, these things. But I just feel like I need to say that, that I really don't feel like this was a well thought out decision. But there have been many other well thought out decisions at the state level. So I'll let them pass on this one. But.
You should abstain, Jess.
I can have objections and still understand that I need to comply with state law.
I assume you're not running the marathon that day?
Thank you. I'm doing it through Zoom.
All right.
So moved.
Thank you, Leo Brem. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Megan Glenn. Second. Roll call, Jess Riley?
Reluctantly, aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anna May O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Um, next item, other items since posting?
I have nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay. Down to old business. Dale Street School Project?
So we continue to move along with the project. The meeting, the working group met on Monday, and I know that Anna May is Chair of the Subcommittee for Communications for the School Building Committee. And I know you guys met yesterday. We're trying to plan, we're planning a info session, a question and answer info session on the project coming up on the 19th of May. And then I know that in Anna May, you could probably speak more to it. Be a survey for the community right after that.
Correct, yes. So the plan was originally to have a survey beforehand to get a baseline, but we decided to go for, just go straight for the info session. And as Dr. Morrison said, really highlight and then get into the Q and A. And, um, so that is going to be on the 19th, so an invitation will go out to the community. However, within that invitation, there is going to be an email address if anyone has any questions or comments that they would like specifically addressed at the public forum to please submit those. And then we'll, you know, we'll take that, we'll compile those questions and comments and try to address them. Also, on the updated milestone, it says the info session is on the 20th of May, but it is actually the 19th at 7:00 PM. So an invitation will go out. And then our vote will be on the 4th of June. So, um, that is the update. Tim Knight is also on the Subcommittee and has been really helpful, um, in helping plan the info session, et cetera, and actually everyone on the Subcommittee. And we're really grateful that Tim Bonfati is on with us because he adds a whole other level of experience and wisdom around this. And I think, you know, we have to be cognizant of, these are crazy times. And although we want to stay the course, we just definitely need to be mindful. And we want to take every, all the considerations in making those decisions. That is it? Anything else? Any questions? Okay. Alrighty, so next one up is FY21 budget.
Okay, so a couple of things on that. We have, we were notified this week by the town that they're looking at our official reduction as $915,000. So down from the million that we were looking at, I think that we gave them $970,000 cuts before. So still a huge reduction that we're looking at. I know Michael is going to meet with the financial team of the town tomorrow. You know, some of the things that we were exploring is looking at, looking at the percentage of cuts, town versus school, and how that all factors into this conversation in making sure that it's equitable and not just school-driven on the cut. So that's some of the things that we're talking about right now. Our budget Subcommittee will have a meeting on Monday. Jess, Megan and I and Michael will have that conversation. We're going to also meet with the warrant committee on Monday evening. We were invited by Mike Pastore last week to come in and talk to them about the budget. So that's where we are there. I mean, the numbers that I gave at the last meeting and the reductions still stay as far as where we are. We have no new information on that. The state, I just want to reiterate some of the stuff that we've talked about at the state level, that the first thing is that the SOA money, the Student Opportunities Act, which was the infusion of money in districts, the deadline that was set by the legislature for the plan by districts was May 15th. It was originally April 1st, moved to May 15th. And the commissioner told us on Monday that he's not encouraging anyone to submit that right now because he doesn't think there's going to be any money there. He's not sure. But I just want to make note of it in the minutes that we are not submitting it by May 15th out of encouragement by the commissioner. So that's, that's one issue. We're looking at reductions of state revenue that could really impact how much the Chapter 70 money is going to, how much we're going to get. We usually get about 6 million, give or take. And with the reductions that they're seeing in loss of revenue, that could be reduced at a certain amount. As I said at the other meetings, the difference between now and the last recession is that the state has $5.4 billion in rainy day funds, which it didn't have the last time. So we're looking for the state to hopefully dip into that to help the school districts and municipalities. The federal stimulus, we think that we're supposed to be notified within the next two weeks what that stimulus money might look like for us. Again, we're not real hopeful on that because the mechanism they're using for dispersment is Title I, and we haven't received Title I money the last two years because of our population. So that could be a situation where we get zero money out of federal government or very little in stimulus. So that's not going to be very helpful for us. And then the other piece that I have mentioned before is that there is a pocket of money that the governor has access to from the federal stimulus money that he can disperse at his, whatever he decides. And we're hoping that some of that money will go to school districts that get very little or no Title I funding. So that's our hope at the state level. And again, a lot of it's up in the air, but we can't really bank on getting additional money from the state or the federal government at this point based on where we stand as a district and as a community. So that's one issue. We have, we have heard that municipalities, regardless of what it looks like, are going to get substantial stimulus money. I've heard that from our association. I'm not sure that that's going to be true. I know Denise Garlick is going to be speaking with the Board of Selectmen next week to give them some information on that. So hopefully, the municipalities can get additional funding, which will certainly help with our FY21 numbers and not having to reduce as much. But again, a lot of it's up in the air. And I believe the town meeting is now, when is it, Michael? It's the end of the month? It's the 27th, 29th?
The 27th.
27th of June. So we do have some time prior to that, but I think it's going to be a different kind of town meeting where they're just looking at the warrant articles that have money associated with them, and then looking at a different, an additional town meeting in the fall. So there's a lot of things up in the air in terms of that, but I think we'll get a lot of information tomorrow after Michael has that meeting with the town's financial team to get a really clear sense of what that is. But like I said, we were informed that it was going to be $915,000 cut that they were looking for. You know, not great. Not great, definitely. And again, I just want to be clear about it, that we were asked for a million prior to COVID-19. So this isn't something that's caused by what's going on with COVID-19. We were asked for a million dollar cut prior to that. So it doesn't look like it's getting any better at that point. Michael, you have anything to add?
No, you said it all, Jeff.
Jeff, two questions.
Go ahead.
One is just clarifying, the original request was a million. You're saying the request, or right now the target is 915? I want to make sure I.
Yep, correct.
Okay, got it. And second is a nit, but I think, I just want to keep my, federal stimulus, we would not expect much due to Title I. But I thought you said, did you say the municipalities would have, there's a separate stimulus that goes to a municipality?
Correct.
I get, get some.
So there might be stimulus money that goes to municipality. I'm not sure the mechanism they're using for that. But it's, it's not a, it's not as tight as a mechanism as Title I. Because Title I, it's an easy way for the state to disperse. It makes sense for it, but it's not going to help us. That's the problem.
I mean, I think if there's, I'm not even going to call this a silver lining, but as, as you've said, Jeff, and as I've often said, we don't get a lot of money from the state, and we don't get a lot of money from the federal government in general.
Correct.
So while it does, while there is, I would never turn down money in any way, shape or form, and I'd be happy if we got more. This is not the thing, the state funding and the federal funding is not the thing that's going to make or break us. You know, Medfield funds itself in a lot of ways. So.
No question.
Do a lot with as much as we can afford. And I'm always kind of astounded by that in terms of the schools.
Alrighty.
So more to come with that, certainly, and at our next meeting. And then we'll, we'll have our Subcommittee meeting on Monday, and then more Committee Monday night. So we'll get additional clarity from that.
Great. All right. Thank you. Next item is kindergarten space enrollment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that's something that we want to keep on the agenda as, either as a future agenda item or as old business to keep that conversation going. Because that really is the data point that we're using for enrollment going forward. We're talking about what kindergarten enrollment looks like and how that changes our elementary enrollment going forward, especially with the building projects. So looking at today's numbers, we currently have 174 students registered for kindergarten, 158 in full day, 16 in half day. So that means we currently have enough students for eight full day sessions, which gives the class average at about 19.75 right now in those classrooms. So there's definitely still room in the full day. We typically cap those at 22 students. And then half day at the 16, which we will typically get some trickling over the summer. But, you know, certainly not the projected number that we're looking at. We looked, looked at from both Nezdek and from MSBA. So it's a little bit lower than what we've looked at. I did get that email, which I shared with you at the last meeting, that Nezdek said to us that it's really hard to predict kindergarten enrollment in Medfield based on the fact that so many people move in after their kids are born. So that, he said, to plan for anywhere between 180 and 225 next year, that doesn't, you know, that's not super helpful. But that's where we are right now. I think it's, you know, Misty's keeping a close eye on that. She and I spoke about it today. And there are definitely, if there are kids out there, we don't know where they are because we've done a really good job trying to do our best in communicating with people like we do each year. And, you know, they've changed that registration around to get more people involved. So as of right now, it's still the 174, which is only up four from the last time we reported, which is two meetings ago.
Are you collecting registration? Oh, sorry.
I'm saying, it'll just be interesting to see what happens over the summer. Frequently, we do get a pretty decent amount of kids over the summer.
Right.
And the real estate is heating up, but you don't know how much, to some extent a lagging indicator that is, you know, like, once you're in the process of buying a house, you're kind of going there. Are people simply going to put the brakes on everything over the summer, depending on how they look or not? I don't know. I mean, I know that two houses around us, even when they were yanked off the market, people came on and said, could you, could you put it back on the market? We'd like to put a bid on. So I don't think anything's sitting right now. It just depends on whether other people feel like moving on.
Yeah, I heard of a house this week that was on for one day in a really nice neighborhood in town that one day it was gone. So I mean, that's definitely, it's definitely happening. Leo, your question was about how we're doing registration?
Yeah, are we doing that online?
Oh, online, yes. Yeah. Yeah. So we have a data person who is really, we made her in charge of registration a year and a half ago, and it's worked out really well, had that central registration person to do that. Instead of going to each school and everything, it was, it was silly. We're having, you know, families that move into town where they have three kids and ask them to go to three different schools instead of just going to one spot. So we changed that, I think it's two years ago now, and that's worked out really well for families.
Very good. Alrighty.
But we'll just keep, keep that on a future agenda item, and I'll keep updating you as we go along. If we have any big jumps, we'll let you know about it.
Super. Alrighty, clause of 2020, year-end plans.
Right. So I just wanted to share kind of an update of where we are. And I know in the narrative, I put that, you know, they're really taking the brunt of all this. And I have a senior, so I totally get it and understand what these kids are going through. So we're trying to do our best with everything that we have, the hands that we have dealt to us. We are still holding out hope, and we have a pretty good plan in place for a live graduation. We're looking at hopefully doing that at some point this summer. We don't want to really release a date yet until we see what restrictions are relaxed after, on or about May 18th by the government. But we feel pretty good about a plan of actually having it outside and getting our kids across the stage like they deserve. So that, that's an exciting piece. The other exciting piece is we've been working closely with some parents that have done a great job to organize a rolling rally for our kids on the actual day and time of their graduation. Was supposed to be on May 31st at 1 o'clock. We've worked with the town, Chief Garrett and Christine, everyone else, to try to make sure that we can pull this off. And they've been great to work with. So I know that Robert released that information to them yesterday. We're going to start getting some tweets out and more information. But really, having a, an opportunity for kids to get in the car with their parents, drive around, have a parade, so to speak, although we can't call it a parade officially. That's why we have a rolling rally. We have a route all mapped out where they can go to school to school, and we hope to have teachers out there supporting the kids as well. So we know it's going to be a big ass because it's a Sunday at 1 o'clock. We feel like we've had straw polls with the principals, and they feel like their teachers are really excited about doing this. So the kids, you know, we started that tradition a couple of years ago where we bust the seniors to their elementary schools, and they get to walk through one last time and see their teachers. So we want to try to do this in a way that still keeps that tradition alive, but in a car at social distance so that they can still go from school to school and see their teachers, and the teachers can see them one last time. So we're hopeful of that. You know, we haven't made a decision yet of the prom. We're still hopeful about pulling something off with that, too. We're not giving up yet. So I think what comes out on May 18th is going to be a real important determination of what we can do going forward. But we're still working on it. We're not giving up on the kids. Fingers crossed.
Indeed. We're trying, Campbell. All right, fantastic. Future agenda items, FY21 budget, further discussions, also Dale Street School Project, challenge success, student feedback, emotional, social emotional learning, school choice, public hearing. And our next meeting is on the 21st, which is after our public forum and information session about the new or proposed Dale Street School. So at this time, do we?
Anna May, just one question.
Yeah.
Is it worthwhile to have this COVID-19 committee conversation as part of the budget or, I mean, sorry, as part of that agenda?
Oh, for sure. That's definitely going to be discussed on the 21st.
Okay.
Thank you. Definitely. All right, any closing statements before we wrap things up? We'll start with Jess.
Um, I, my own, I actually have one question. Can we talk a little bit about what the, or just informationally, what's the process for getting this Zoom recording up onto Medfield TV, as fascinating television as it is? Because I just know that it's, there are people who would like to watch portions of this, but I don't know exactly kind of what the process is. Is that, you know, we bundle it as a bunch of data and send it over to Medfield TV? Have they been editing? What's going on?
Yeah, so Owen, Owen takes this recording and sends it over to Medfield TV.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay, great, thanks. Other than that, I am staying in my house, planting my garden, and acting as a remote support. And that's it. And I'm here for another three years. So thank you.
Leo?
Uh, I want to give another shout out to the teachers. You know, they've been pivoting and shifting, and poor machine from Wheelock had a deal with my son today trying to keep him engaged on a Zoom call. I watched that firsthand. So that's a, I don't know. Campbell, you've been changing your background on your Zoom calls?
I've tried to multiple times, not very good at it. So figure that out. Everyone knows how to do it but me, so.
Give me a call later, we'll do a little tech support. It's fine. Yeah. Now, joking aside, trying to keep spirits up. It's hard on everybody. And, and, yeah, just thank everyone for their commitment again to, you know, to the town. And there's a lot of helping hands out there and really appreciate it. Even, even in the, just in the neighborhood, you know, one of Henry's projects is he put a cooler out in front of our house with a sign to collect food for the Medfield Food Bank. And, and he's been getting something every single day. So, so walkers up and we get a lot of foot traffic here now on South Street. So, and I have to say that we're impressed that every day, there's always something in there. So it's been, it's been going very well. So, and that's about it. Closing, closing statement wise, I figured a happy story would be appropriate.
Great. Megan?
Um, I just want to apologize for my tardiness to this Zoom party and thank Owen for walking me through that. I don't know what happened or what rabbit hole I went down, but I made it here. And I also wanted to say congratulations to Anna May and Jess. And really thank you for committing yourselves to three more years because it's not an easy job, and it's not on time-consuming either. So I appreciate you volunteering, and I'm glad to have you back. I also just wanted to mention, since this week is teachers' appreciation, that more timely than ever. Now, just thank you, thank you, thank you so much to all the teachers and administrators and everyone in Medfield School District who's been just doing so much to support our students while trying to support their own families at home. And today, my youngest and I walked over and put the painted rocks in the big M on the town hall, which I think, kudos to the PTO. They're coming up with really creative ways and things to do. And I'm looking at Campbell, it's so good to see you. And Andrew, too. I hope you guys are doing well. I have a teenager at home, too, and it's starting to get real. It's getting real.
All over here, too.
Yeah, real one. So, hey, before we go on, Kim Estes in the crowd had her hand up. I'm not sure if there was a question before we wrap up.
Do we have a question from Kim?
Kim, there's a Q and A area where you can ask your question, maybe while everyone else is doing closing statements. If she puts it in there, we can answer it.
Yeah. Great. Tim?
Box, okay.
Yes, sure. No, echoing a lot, congratulations to Anna May and Jess. Glad we're going to stay together on this. Thanks. In advance, I love seeing things like this rolling rally, and we all know the town will step up, you know, as we continue to really honor the teachers and the students. And, you know, I think it's great, things like that are exciting. And Megan, I will, we're late. I have Zoom expertise, and Anna May somehow we got through it, so I can give you that same discounted rate. Look at that look. She's annoyed.
Oh, yeah.
You're getting the squint.
Yeah, that one is frozen. She's frozen.
I'm not going to ever do that joke again.
That, that didn't go over well, Tim.
I think she is frozen.
I think she is frozen, actually.
I'm there somewhere. I don't, I have to think about it, but.
Oh, dear. Too funny. All right. Campbell?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you all for a great four years. I think this is my last one, and passing on to Andrew, and hopefully does a great job for you. But the last four years, and this one in particular, has been a really great experience for me. And just want to say thank you for that. And congratulations. It was a, I was there to vote. It was my second vote, so that was great as well. So.
Thank you. I mean, if you voted for me, thank you.
Thanks, Campbell.
Thank you. Um, and Andrew, if you want to go ahead and just kind of discuss Uwe Board stuff if you want.
Okay, so there's one big thing that we're kind of working on right now, which is a surprise for the, kind of a surprise for the seniors. So we're doing a YouTube livestream to recap the seniors' final year at, in high school. So it's kind of like a pep rally style type thing. So we're doing, we're having the three pep rally hosts record segments from their own homes, and then we're stitching them together and having them kind of introduce different slideshows from different events throughout the year. So that's going to go live on YouTube on the seniors' last day, or like would have been last day. So next Friday.
Cool.
Cool. Yeah.
You guys are very creative. That's fantastic. Thank you. Um, did I miss anyone?
I can go unless you want to.
Oh, sorry.
Go last or?
Nope, go for it.
Okay. I'm just, I just have a few things. I just want to recognize again, our teachers and our nurses for Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurse Appreciation Week. And, you know, the work that they've done over the past few weeks has just been fantastic. I put out a tweet the other day, basically saying that I just feel like no other profession could pivot this quickly and this well, you know? And I just feel like they just did such a wonderful job, and want to thank them for that. I want to thank the PTO, too, for the M in the heart outside of town hall. I, I'm looking at it right now, and it's been really cool to see how many families have come to drop off rocks. I've got a chance to go out and talk to a few. And it's just nice to be able to see the kids again and the families again. It's been great. So I really thank them for that. And I just want to thank Campbell. I know that, you know, being a high school kid is really busy, and I'm sure that hanging out at school committee meetings isn't first on your list. But you've done a great job, and you've always given us a perspective that. But you've done a great job and you've always given us a perspective that, that have given us pause and think. And sometimes we get wrapped up a lot in the adult stuff and you bring it right back to why we're all here. So thank you, Campbell.
Thank you. It's been an awesome experience and I really do feel like I've had, like my voice heard here especially. So it's been a great four years.
Great. And Campbell, I typically take the rep out for, for lunch with a friend. So once all this clears up, we'll have to do, do a lunch at some point, okay?
Sounds great.
Super. And Campbell, please extend our gratitude to Ella Kohler as well. She's been a really great voice that's been added to the committee as long, as well as the other student reps. But Campbell, I, um, thank you. Um, I have a senior too. So I see, I always get crazy. Anyways, I, what I appreciate most about you, Campbell, is your, your positivity. You know, the first time, I think it was our last school committee meeting in the library and we hadn't even fully canceled school yet. And we said, oh, you know, we're thinking about you. This could be really horrible. And you said, you know what? Other people have bigger problems. We're, we're in a good space. You know, we live in a great town. So I appreciate that attitude, that attitude. And mindset is going to take you far. So all the best to you.
Thank you so much. It's, and thank you for everything you've all been doing to make up for what we've lost. It's, you know, in any other town, I don't know what likely it would have gone to. So thank you.
And I just want to also teacher appreciation, you know, I know it's not all roses and unicorns all the time, but I believe that there's a new, um, an extra special appreciation for teachers right now in many of our homes and the work they do. So profound gratitude to all of them. And also I just want to remind folks that it is Mental Health Awareness Month in, everywhere. And, um, Medfield, the Co, Medfield Coalition for Suicide Prevention, they're doing an initiative along with Medfield TV that's starting this Monday, every Monday is going to be Mental Health Monday and different programming. So I encourage people to check out Medfield TV and in next week's Hometown Weekly, there's going to be a green heart insert for folks to put up in their windows just to spread the awareness. You know, we have interface, we have wonderful resources. Dr. Worthley has been passing on some excellent resources for families as well. So I'm, I'm eternally grateful for that. And just want to remind people, I will be a broken record, May nineteenth, our public forum. I think we're trying to get other groups to come in, other partnership groups to, to spread the word. So on that note, it's been two hours, folks.
I'll have to ask one quick question. When is the PTO sponsored COVID, the, the next kind of seminar that they were doing? I know they, they were doing something co-sponsored with Midway? Is that?
Oh, yes. I saw that come out. I actually think it's on the same day. I think it's on the night.
I'm really bummed out about that one. All right. Well, glad to hear that news again. Yeah, we'll have to see if it's exactly the same time or not. I don't know. But so, but we'll, we'll put both of those out.
Motion to adjourn. Second. Second, so moved by Leo, seconded by Jess, and then we'll take a roll call. Jess Riley.
Aye.
Leo Graham.
Aye.
Megan Glenn.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just in cyberspace. Hi.
Tim Knight.
Aye.
And Anna Mayo Shae Brook.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks. Good luck, Campbell. Welcome, Andrew.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Ciao.
Welcome, Andrew.